At this time, we'll open up for a public comment. Is there anybody in person that would like to make a comment? Please come to the microphone. Second call. Anybody online, Chris? All right, we'll close public comment. Uh, communication. There it is.
Okay, sorry, we don't have any communication.
Okay, perfect. Superintendent report.
Thank you. Leominster Public Schools has been very busy since our last, uh, school committee meeting on Tuesday, the 27th of August, we held our all staff meeting at Leominster High School. This meeting was a time to introduce and reintroduce cabinet members to all of the staff of Leominster Public Schools. I also introduced all of the school committees so everybody would be familiar with, uh, the names and, and who everyone is. I was able to share, um, my things about myself and also what I believe in as far as education. And then we also had a fabulous guest speaker, Steve Pemberton, who delivered a powerful and inspirational message to help kick off our school year. The next day, Wednesday, the 28th, we had a Fallbrook Building Committee meeting. From the school side, myself, Steve Mamoni, Melanie Michaels, Butch Nadu, and Jeff Sullivan, the sitting principal at Fallbrook Elementary School attended. We are all members of that, um, meeting group. And we voted on a preferred schematic report that was submitted to the MSBA by the OPM, which is left field, the, the next day on the 29th. As soon as we have more information about that, I will update the committee. The Alumni Field Project at Leominster High School is underway. The RFP went public on, um, Wednesday, August 28th. We have a site visit for any potential, um, bidders to go and look at the current field, uh, tomorrow and the facilities department and staff at the high school are coordinating that visit so it doesn't interrupt things that are happening at the high school. Uh, and then there will be a bid opening on September 26th. The mayor and I followed up on an item from the last school committee meeting. We met with, uh, the representative from Habitat for Humanity, um, the executive director for the North Central Region. And, um, we were able to confirm that, um, we can have a, um, local preference as part of the process. So the, um, next school committee meeting, perhaps the mayor will be able to, um, bring forward, uh, a potential project for CTEI, uh, but we, we, we still are working on that. And so that's really the big updates since our last meeting. I want to thank, uh, all of the members of the cabinet, uh, who helped support all of the initiatives that I, um, spoke about. And then also the school committee for supporting these initiatives as well. Um, it's exciting and I look forward to updating you all the next, uh, meeting.
Thank you.
I just move forward. We have our student reps here and they're listed on the agenda. I wanted to give a quick introduction to Ren Patel, who's a senior at LHS and Hersh Patel, who is a junior at CTEI, who will both be joining us this year. And if they want to give a quick introduction, I'd like them to be able to say something.
Hello, my name is Hersh Patel and I'm the CTI representative for this year and I look forward for the year.
Hello, my name is Ren Patel. Um, some of you might know me. I'm president de stump at LHS, um, and I like to be very civically engaged, so I look forward to working with all of you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, next is item 2A, Superintendent Desmond's entry plan.
Thank you. The entry plan, uh, for the superintendency is part of the process of a new superintendent in Massachusetts, uh, participating in, um, the new superintendent's program. And so, um, with this entry plan, um, I'm presenting to you tonight, the start of the process, which is really the listening and learning portion of the entry plan. And so, um, what I intend to do is meet with as many stakeholders as possible, uh, between now and, um, the, um, end of phase one, which should end sometime around mid-September. So I have been doing this work since July. Um, and so what this plan presents you with is my focus goals in this process, which are to really get a good understanding of the organization's strengths, uh, challenges and opportunities for growth. Build relationships with internal and external stakeholders, uh, establish a positive, positive presence within the community. And then also, um, to develop a diverse group of, um, support, um, staff that will help me identify and develop a strategy aimed at accelerating academic progress for all students in Leominster Public Schools. There are, on the second page after the introduction is transitional goals. And this is really the goals that are guiding the development of my entry plan. I spoke to a lot of the pieces of it a moment ago. But there's also pieces around understanding the, uh, financial position of the district currently, understanding how the operational components all align. Assessing the district's commitment to equity and inclusion. Establishing positive working relationships with all of you and communication processes and developing, um, trusting, positive working relationships with school administrators, teachers and support staff. There's some questions, um, that are outlined here as well that I'm asking, uh, most people that I'm meeting with to get a sense of, um, or, or, or for me to be able to gather information to get a sense of, of how all of those, um, items, um, all work together currently and then also where there are opportunities for, uh, growth. On the next page, it just talks about my intended outcomes, um, which will culminate in a formal report that I will present to you, um, at the start of, um, the new calendar year. So sometime around January, I'll have a final report that I will present to you. Um, the process is outlined as well, phase one, which I'm well in, in the midst of, um, gathering data and meeting with people. I've been doing it since July 1. Um, and then there's a list of documents that I'm pulling together and looking through so that I can be as informed, uh, as well informed as possible, um, to be able to create the final plan. Phase two is the planning stage at September 15th to November 1st. And again, I've outlined who I'll be working with and those key activities that, um, will be a part of that phase. And then the final phase is phase three, which will end, um, with a presentation to school committee that's public with a written report of my findings and strategies, uh, for continuing, um, to look to accelerate, uh, the school system. So I don't want to go and read every detail of this report because it's been in your, in your, um, packets, but, um, I just wanted to formally present it to you. As I mentioned, in part, this process, um, is guided through my participation in a three year induction program for new superintendents. And that program is a collaboration between the Department of Ed and the Mass Association of School Superintendents. And through that, um, program, I am given, I am provided the opportunity to work with other new superintendents as collaborative thought partners, but I'm also provided with a coach who was a former superintendent in Massachusetts. And my coach is here today and I'd like to have, um, Marcos Rodriguez come up and, um, speak briefly about the program, if that's okay. Marco?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Happy to be here. As, um, Superintendent Desmond, uh, described, uh, the NISIP program, and I don't know how many of you know about the program, but NISIP stands for New Superintendent Induction Program, is a program that is, has been in existence for 14 years. So she's in cohort 15. Uh, and, uh, currently we have 21 new superintendents in this cohort, uh, throughout Massachusetts. So every, uh, superintendent participating in this program is assigned a coach. I'll be her coach. I'm very excited about that. It is a three-year program. The first year is a program where we has more intense kind of connection with the, the new superintendents. Uh, we will be meeting once a month, uh, to go through processes, including the entry plan and entry findings and other things that are pertinent to the first year superintendent to make sure, uh, they actualize those, you know, those, um, uh, documents throughout the first year. And, um, and my job is to help her further develop her skills. She has great skills already, but working with a coach will be able to, uh, access more, uh, information go throughout the, the first year in the superintendent's seat. Uh, it's, it's a lot of responsibility, a lot of things that needs to be done and having a coach as a sounding board and a person that she can rely, uh, to be able to continue with her, you know, job as a superintendent, but at the same time, you know, provide some growth for her own professional development. So, and part of this process is to ensure that I will be coming, we, we connect, you know, uh, virtually, uh, often, but also besides the monthly meetings, I'll be coming to the district to observe her with her leadership team, observe her with, you know, with principals, visiting classrooms, so make sure that she, you know, I see, you know, her, all the things that are necessary for, you know, a good superintendent to be, uh, developing the first year. Like I said, she comes with great credentials. Uh, she has a, 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 a large, um, repertoire of transferable skills that'll be great for Leominster and I'm excited to see and participate in her first year journey in Leominster Public Schools. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Now we'll do the opening of school overview.
Great. Well, we had a great, uh, first week last week, uh, Wednesday, August 28th. We welcomed back our students in grades one through 12. The cabinet, uh, and myself spent the week visiting schools, offering support to building leaders, um, and just asking questions of staff to ensure that, um, everybody had what they needed. It was great to see both students and, uh, staff all sort of settling back into their, uh, classrooms. Uh, and it was great to see classrooms abuzz with learning. When I went around, I commented to many people that it seemed like it was day 10 or 12, uh, on the first day. Uh, it was just, uh, great to see everybody back in action. Today, we welcomed kindergarten and pre-K, uh, which was exciting. It's always great to see our youngest learners and, um, I thank their families for entrusting their youngest, uh, students with us. There, there seemed to be great transition into classrooms today. And, um, when I went around today and, uh, saw kindergarteners, it seemed like everybody was, uh, transitioning very well. So, um, it's a testament to the hard work of, uh, our staff, uh, all around, uh, in the schools that support all of our students every day. Teachers were, uh, ready to go, well-planned, prepared to receive students and it, it showed. Uh, so all of that pre-work, uh, led up to some really great, uh, outcomes last week and then this week. As I mentioned, uh, in the weekly update to families on Sunday, all schools purchase school supplies. So as students need supplies, they'll be given supplies. That doesn't necessarily mean that students are going to go home with tons of notebooks and so forth. It just means that when projects and things, uh, arise in schools, they'll be provided with the materials they need to be able to do that. The other thing that I also want to mention is that busing is a work in progress, uh, because we added kindergarten students to the, to the, um, routes today that, uh, changed how the buses were functioning last week. Um, so I just ask for people to be patient around busing. Um, as questions come up, Mel Michael's office has been answering and supporting families, but, um, busing is always, it takes a little bit of time to sort of settle in and have a really strong routine around when bus stops, uh, when buses stop, it stops and pick up students. And so, um, I just want to mention that as well. And on a side, last Friday, um, I stopped by Doyle Field. We had a football scrimmage and it was really nice to see families and kids all out supporting Leominster, um, schools. So, um, if anybody is, um, interested, you can go to the Leominster Public School website and click on events and see what's going on at schools. You can click, click on the athletic link and see what, um, sports, um, activities are happening during the week. There's a lot going on in Leominster, so the more people can, uh, get out there and see what's going on, um, I would encourage them to do so. Again, I just want to thank the cabinet for all of their support, um, and the school committee for contributing to such a positive start to the school year. So thank everybody. Thank you for that.
Any questions at all?
Here it was off to a good start.
We already have a date for graduation, May 31st. It's cool. The first class that's ever graduated in May. We're making history. So you can all run, run around with the number one. First, number one. We're number one. All right, now we're going to move on to equity vision.
So Loreen Sepola and Renee Costa is going to come up and speak to the process and where we're at with this.
And my friend Kyle is going to navigate the slides for me because he does such a good job. So thank you.
You never see him.
Yeah, that's right.
Just behind some curtains.
Yes.
All of a sudden it zooms in on its own.
So good evening, everyone. Thank you for the time. Renee and I are sitting here to bring this equity vision forward, but it certainly was a group effort. There were many people from the community, uh, school committee members and members of the district and parents that were, that took part in this process last year. We did come to you at a certain point last year to talk about this. So just a little reminder, Kyle, the next slide. We really wanted to ground this work for the district with a vision statement. Explicitly to make sure that we had, that we were very intentional and that we gave everyone the opportunity to come forward and provide information or input into what we were doing. So part of the process did include a number of, uh, opportunities to reach out to families and students. I will say, the students that we had from the high school last year were a breath of fresh air and we received more feedback on the survey that our young people did at the high school than we did from parents and from community members. So they were quite a voice, uh, that was part of this process. Just as a reminder of the scope of the work last year, Kyle, we met seven times throughout the year. It was a commitment. Some of them were face-to-face and some of them were virtual, but we asked people to come together from four to six PM on these occasions. So it was quite a commitment. And we went through the process of creating goals and objectives. We then looked at the current state of equity in Leominster with a data review. And then we went out to, uh, ask stakeholders to provide us with information so that the group that was together would have a current, um, group of data, not just from some historical pieces that we had. So the equity group then went through various iterations and worked very closely together under the support of our, um, friends from a tune educational partners to come up with a vision statement. It went out back to the community. We asked for feedback again and we now have a, a finalized vision that we're bringing forward to you. Just as a reminder, Kyle, the next slide. The school committee members that volunteered for this, they tag teamed it a bit. So it was Eileen and Melissa and Josh, and they were present, um, one, two, or two at each of our sessions. Um, we had parents. Again, I mentioned the high school students, teachers and principals. Um, from our district level, we had representation from human resources, from special education, from L education and from curriculum instruction as well as our superintendent. We had parents who were also a very vital piece of our special education parent advisory council and our L education parent advisory council. So we did have a lot of people that were at the session. And instead of listening to me read the equity, um, vision, my friend Renee, the elementary, um, principal, mentioned that we should model what we do in classrooms. So I've put the heavy arm on my, um, friends from the school committee and they're going to read our Leominster Equity Vision Statement for the audience. Thank you.
Great. So at Leominster Public Schools, we are unwavering in our commitment to educational equity. We believe that our students, regardless of background or identity, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, um, religion is mentioned twice, um, echoes, uh, socioeconomic status, learning needs, physical ability and other diverse characteristics deserve an education that meets their unique needs and enables them to achieve at the highest levels. Ending it over to Jeff.
To ensure educational equity, we are dedicated to ensuring all students engage in rigorous, culturally responsive, learning experiences that prepare all students for success in Leominster and beyond. Cultivating strong supportive relationships between students, staff, families and community, and allocating resources equitably based on student needs.
By examining and addressing biases and listening to all voices, we create an inclusive environment where every student feels valued. In partnership with our community, we continuously reflect, grow and take bold action to dismantle barriers to equity. We embrace our diversity as a strength. Together, we are building a school system that ensures educational equity and enables every student to thrive and reach their full potential.
Thank you very much. And the next slide. So what are our next steps? This vision statement, and again, thank you to everyone that was part of this, really has given us, um, an explicit commitment and a guiding document to work towards. It is a vision, so it is something that we will be continually to, continuing to work for. And it also allows us to have some accountability as we move forward with our work together. So we're thinking about a three-year plan, moving forward to get our district closer to this vision. Year one, we are going to continue with our equity working group. So we will be asking the members that we had from last year if they would like to continue. And we will also open it up to other members of our community that may be interested. We are planning to do the same type of work, so we would have six or more sessions, again, um, early evenings throughout the year, starting in October. We will be sending out information to everyone who was part of that to see if they would like to recommit. We'll also be asking for some new student members, so you can spread the word on that. And our first piece will be to do an audit of what's in place right now. So now that we have our vision, what does Leominster look like as in comparison to what that vision is? And then there are some pieces that we will be doing throughout the year with our professional development for our, our district teachers and other staff to start the year. So that's our plan for year one. And we will certainly bring that information back to you all when we flesh that out a little bit with our working group. You got that. Thank you.
Sounds like the last sentence of your vision statement is your vision statement. We embrace our diversity as a strength. If you want people to remember it, it's just my two cents. That's how I remember things. You know what Jordan's furniture's mission statement is?
Can I ask after?
Jordan's furniture, you know what their mission statement is? We aim to wow.
We aim to wow?
So we embrace our diversity as a strength. Basically, we don't care who you are. This is a learning institution. We'll do everything within our power.
This is a mission statement?
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, just, just, if you want anybody to remember or you want to engage people in something, then...
That's a pretty strong statement. Thank you.
I think at the end of the day, no, I'm just saying at the end of the day, what's your tagline, right? What's the thing you most want everybody to remember? Because I like to remember things, but sometimes I can't.
Yeah.
Remember all of this. I get it. It's kind of what I think we do every day is saying, we don't care who you are. I think we've said that multiple times.
You know, like Children's Hospital at one point had a, uh, a mission statement or vision statement that was, until every child as well, like supposed to be that guiding principle that, you know, if the CEO were to leave, that the company would go on and understand what they're, this, I, yeah, clearly people spent tremendous amount of time working on this and I appreciate it. This is really a vision, this is a mission statement, seems like it. The last line, like you said, it's like, it's what is that overarching theme? What is the commander's intent? You know, what are we trying to achieve? What are we trying to work towards? It should really be, you know, from what I, I, as we're sitting here, I, I looked at companies' mission statements, vision statements. Oh my God, I keep doing this. You know, and like health equity compact. This organization's vision is to achieve health equity for all Massachusetts resident, residents by dismantling systemic barriers and promoting equitable practices and structures. Uh, Department of Public Health, this organization's vision is to create an equitable and just public health system that supports the well-being of all Massachusetts residents. Right? So, just mine.
I will say, this was a group effort with the community partners and everybody who was in the room. And if you turn to the last page, there's, uh, plenty of opportunities to get involved going forward. Just do it.
Okay, Josh.
If I may, we are in the business of education and one of the things that came out of our working group was a vision statement that would hopefully educate the community as well. So there may be a little more in this than there are in other vision statements, but that was the will of the, the group.
Right, I, I think you did a great job. I'm just saying, translation is, bottom line, is something that I and other members have repeated. We want this as an educational learning institution. We'll do everything we can, send your kid to school rested, fed and ready to learn and we will perform miracles. All right, I mean, that's what happens every day inside these buildings. But you've got to send your kids to school rested, fed and ready to learn and, um, understand that this is a diverse community, very diverse.
So everybody can unfortunately do those things. And I think that's... What the issues are, uh, which is why we're trying to...
For parents as opposed to us as a district owning our own statement of what we do and not just what we want.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. I'm just, you know, on the street level, I sometimes have to take it like this and AI it, right? Starts here and simplify it. Okay, do we have to do anything?
So stay tuned.
Stay tuned, we will. Mission statement, stay tuned. All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to minutes, August 19th meeting. Oh, we did, we, school committee start time. Do we have to change something?
Well, so I think at one point you had mentioned, um, starting at five. And I know for me, that's very difficult.
I'll come here anytime you want. I just live...
So 15, certainly affords us the ability to, um, have, uh, the subcommittees before the meeting. We certainly have had executive sessions then. I don't think we can move it any earlier than, yeah, six o'clock. Just my feeling.
Speak for myself.
I just, I do, I go to meetings for a living. This is, so I can come here anytime, from three o'clock in the morning on.
Let's not do that.
Now, an interesting note, tomorrow morning, if you're up at either four or a little after 5:30, you can see, uh, the International Space Station. I'll call you.
It's there at 5:30.
I'll call you all if you guys want.
Four, no.
All right, so six o'clock's okay and then the subcommittee meetings can go on a little sooner. All right, so 6:00 is okay, and then the subcommittee meetings can go on a little sooner.
Agreed.
The only thing is, if we do like, so I'll plan, like, there's other meetings. If we have like an executive session, just let me know ahead of time, so I can plan that out rather than noticing at the last minute. Just, that's all. Okay, approval of the minutes, August 19th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August 19th.
All right, any questions, comments, errors, omissions? Boy, Chris, you've gotten really good. Man, your performance level's like... Strike that from the record, please. Bite your tongue. All right, all in favor, those opposed? Thank you. Move now on to subcommittee reports. Any policy subcommittees? Finance updates. Just?
Just.
So no grants, just, 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 just? Okay, all right, who's going to read those off, starting September?
What's warrant one, though? So do I have to read off $0? All right. We'll start with warrant two then. Warrant two totaling $308,414.76. Warrant three totaling $302,257.55. Warrant four, $1,169,743.20. Warrant five, $379,017.86. Warrant six, $733,991.99. Warrant seven, $449,639.76. Warrant eight, $2,625,288.37. And then we want to do grants revolving or separate?
Go ahead, you can.
Okay.
Then I'll go take a separate.
Under grants and revolving, warrant one, $234,018.53. Warrant two, $408,557.60. Warrant three, Warrant four, $568,014.19. Warrant five, $511,942.39. Warrant six, $683,010.9. Warrant seven, $423,327.11. Warrant eight, $630,742.70.
All right, we'll take the first. We'll take two separate. One is for the regular budget. I assume that was a recommendation or?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a second. Second. Any questions or comments on the fiscal year? It's not all in favor? And then grants and revolving, is the motion to the second? Next, Jennifer. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Provable warrants. Done those action items, the action items. New role of business, any new role business?
Has the teacher's contract been signed?
Yes.
It has been, okay, because there were some questions generated to me a couple of weeks ago. Whether or not I have been signed.
I told Steve that I'd sign it immediately and give it to him, but he got it first, so he brought over and signed it.
Okay, thank you.
And a big thanks to the negotiating committee. That was excellent job, and to the union. I think that was more than fair on all angles, and that's...
That's smoother than any other district in the state, I would say.
It's what you hope. At the end of the day, is people feel that it was a fair agreement. That's the best part, rather than people reading something and don't feel that it was fair, either side or both sides. So wonderful job by everybody. From now on, you're negotiating all the contracts.
As another item, just to remind people that we have the school committee superintendent conference coming up in November, and we need to let Chris know whoever is planning to attend so that she can register us and get us a decent rate. So we just want to make sure people, it's always the week before Veterans Day.
Anything else under new role business? So I mean, it looks like school started off fine. I mean, there's always going to be busing issues. People aren't sure. There's always that. And I know when my kids were young, anything happened, it was like, it was a big deal. It should be, right? So everyone's handled it accordingly, right? Very nicely, right? And, but just pay a little more patience till we work out.
Especially those little ones, especially the kindergartners. Somebody's not waiting at the bus stop. That delays everything, right?
It seems like, I don't know, from the parent information center, it seems like a lot of new families that have come to our city, and so they look very excited. All right, anything else? If not, I don't know, I feel like we should be doing something like for a walk around the building or something, you know? Something else we can do? Ron, you've been quiet all night. Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, yeah, it's still...
All in favor? Thank you. Ron's pontiff.